Good evening and welcome to the Tempe City Council Meeting for May 4th here in the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. For all those that are able, could you please rise and join us at the invocation by a council member, Shapira, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Mayor. In lieu of a public prayer, I'll be praying to myself as I turn to the east, and I encourage you to do the same if you like.
Amen. Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I vote for you.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember QB. We have Councilman Navarro on the phone, and we have Councilmember Granville could not be with us due to a school conflict, and Councilmember Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage could not be with us this evening. It's been moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember QB. Please vote. All those members, all those members say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I motion we approve items B. 1 through 7.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating for items B. 1 through 7. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember QB. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry forward. Next is my announcements, and I'll come down to the podium. Hey, Joel, why don't you mute it?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. For the 21st year, Tempe has received an Arbor Day Foundation's Tree City USA certification. We have also received the 15th Growth Award for our dedication and sustained urban forest management. The community has achieved the Tree City USA status by demonstrating a commitment to caring for and managing our public trees. And here in Tempe, our trees are very important to us. They really are. So it is our big point of pride to earn this designation. Here to accept the Tempe City's, City of Tempe's Tree City USA Award is Shawn Thompson from our Public Works Department. And Shawn, once again, applied for this distinction on behalf of the city this year and was instrumental to our recognition. So I really want to thank you, Shawn, again, for your continued commitment to the City of Tempe's urban forest. If you could please come forward. I think we just had Arbor Day last week, or Arbor Tree, and we planted some trees. And I know Councilmember QB and myself and Council, and Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage planted, how many trees, Lauren, did we plant in this year? Forty-two trees on Saturday. It's really exciting to see all the trees taking shape and shade for us as well. Next is our Police Week, and our Tempe Police Officers work every day to make our city safe and a thriving place to live. Our quality of life does depend on the service of our outstanding Police Department. You must also recognize the great risk our officers take every day to protect us and also honor the lives of those who have fallen in the line of service. Today, I'm honored to recognize the great service of the individuals and the peace and unity they bring to our community and their work to protect us every day. I also want to recognize those officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty. Please join me for a moment of silence to honor those fallen officers. Thank you. And now, since I don't have to invite them up because they're already up here, I'd like to invite the Tempe Police Honor Guard members, Chief Moir, Assistant Chief Carverhal, Assistant Chief Buren, Detective Bacon, Sergeant Elcock, Officer Capone, Officer Fath, and Officer Conklin. And could you please join me to receive the National Peace Office Memorial and National Police Week proclamation, which is, whereas the Tempe Police Officers and their families are members of the community and strive to earn the trust, build partnerships, and keep the peace, and the Tempe Police defend and protect lives, safety, and property, uphold our U.S. Constitution, and protect the rights of all those with whom we come in contact; and whereas we honor the memory and the sacrifice of fallen law enforcement officers on Peace Officer Memorial Day on May 15th; and whereas the National Police Week is celebrated May 15th through the 21st, so dedicated by President John F. Kennedy in 1962; and whereas since the first known line of duty death in 1791, more than 20,000 U.S. law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice per the National Law Enforcement Memorial Fund. The FBI reports that during 2015, there were 50,212 assaults on law enforcement officers, and on average, one law enforcement officer is killed in the line of duty somewhere in the United States every 61 hours. And whereas the safety and quality of life of our community depends in a great measure on the dedication, capability, compassion, and daily service of Tempe Police Officers. Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare as May 15th through the 21st, 2017, as a National Peace Officer Memorial and National Police Week in Tempe, Arizona. Let's give a round of applause for our officers. So thank you so much. Next is our announcements from our City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Happy to have a few announcements this evening. First, Braden Kaye is here to provide the Sustainability Program update.
Good evening, Mayor Mitchell and Distinguished Council. I'm Braden Kaye, your Sustainability Manager. I'm here to present a brief update on the Office of Sustainability. In your last Friday packet, you received a memo that includes an update of the first six months of the Office of Sustainability and a draft work plan for fiscal year 2018. I will provide several highlights. The purpose of the Office of Sustainability and the position I currently hold is to guide sustainability efforts throughout the city and locate resources to help achieve the council's sustainability goals. The sustainability goals are predominantly articulated in the Strategic Management Plan under Priority Area 4, Sustainable Growth and Development. The main focus of the Office of Sustainability will be to achieve the goals articulated by council, and the Office will distinguish between what efforts that we lead versus places where we're consulting and supporting other departments. There has been some comment this week about some of those articulated goals, and we're continuing to work with the Office of Strategic Management on some of the wording of particular, some of those particular efforts. We haven't detailed specific targets in all of the performance measures, and that's something that we'll work to further articulate. First, I'd like to provide an update on some of the work that we've led in the first six months. In your packet is our work plan. That's an example page up there. As I've mentioned previously, we worked with Don Bessler and the Public Works staff on the Urban Resilience Workshop funded by the National League of Cities to develop a common language and understanding amongst senior staff on key sustainability and resilience issues. The Office has also led efforts to support the opening of Sing Meadows, and I've seen many of you there, at the former Rio Salado Golf Course. Sing Meadows recently won the first sustainability awards for a commercial entity at the state of the neighborhoods that the mayor presided over last week. My interns and I have also worked to fulfill our commitment to the mayor's climate compact by completing our city's first greenhouse gas emissions inventory. We submitted it this week with serious amount of support from Grace Kelly and other Public Works staff, and I also want to note that Kiki Houdin, in the back here, please stand Kiki. She was the major effort behind our greenhouse gas inventory. The entire city wants to thank you for your work. So thank you. Has joined us as a master student from the School of Sustainability and is going to be going on as an AmeriCorps Vista member in Durango, Colorado, and we wish her the best of luck and really appreciate all of her effort. The Office of Sustainability is also incorporating sustainability into Fire Station 7. We've been a presence in examining water conservation and communication interventions as well as the ongoing utility rate study. We've also worked to support community development, neighborhood services, and the mayor's office at this year's State of the Neighborhoods, and we've received a lot of positive feedback on the inspiring talks and ways that we engage residents on specific actions they can take to make their homes and neighborhoods more sustainable. In terms of looking forward to 2018, we will be focused on attracting grants that support the attainment of our performance measures in Priority Area 4. Please see the memo for specifics on our grant strategy and our attempt to find cost-avoidance opportunities and where the Office can work, do work that might otherwise be done by a consultant, such as these resilient workshops we've done and will do in the future, and work on Fire Station 7. I will continue to work with the National League of Cities. They have invited me to speak next week at the National Climate Adaptation Forum in Minnesota to talk about our efforts to coordinate investments to combat extreme heat and create a more livable city here in Tempe. We will also continue to fulfill our commitment to the mayor's climate compact. This will include publishing our greenhouse gas inventory, working on our climate action plan, and supporting Grace Kelly and her work to create a clear plan to achieve our current 20% municipal energy goal by 2025. The Climate Action Plan, which is part of our commitment of the mayor's climate compact, is an opportunity for us to examine our energy use and our renewables goals and set a clear path to reducing our footprint while trying to avoid the potential shocks of extreme heat. I will return at a later date to present our findings of our greenhouse gas emissions inventory and present a work plan on how we're going to set targets, our opportunity to set targets, and work with the over 600 cities that have joined the mayor's climate compact. I'm very excited about the work that city staff, mayor, and council have done to advance sustainability, and I look forward to working with all of you to continue to create a more livable and sustainable city. If anyone watching at home has additional questions or concerns, feel free to email me at braden_k@tempe.gov. Mayor, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Braden. Thank you so much for that report and to help us reach our goal. And I want to thank Councilmember QB and the whole entire council really pushing to get this involved with our city. So thank you. Here, Councilmember QB.
Just a word to say, I can't believe it's been only nine months since you've been on board, and you've had such great impact in the city and the community and connecting ASU to the city. So thank you so much for all your work. Looking forward to what's ahead.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Next, I'd like to present Elizabeth Higgins, who will come up and give you a Tempe 311 update.
Mayor and council, my name is Elizabeth Higgins. I'm chief of staff to the mayor and council, and within my realm of the city, I also oversee the 311 Customer Service Center. Kim Moncaio here is our 311 supervisor, and she's been working really hard on this project. So we're excited to announce a new upgrade to the Tempe 311. It's a new app and a new online reporting system, and so there's some differences between the old system and the new system. So I'm happy to have a few minutes to update you on what the new system is going to look like. So as you know, Tempe 311 provides a fast and easy way for residents to connect to the city hall for non-emergency services. There's one number to call to request a service, report an issue of city facilities, and ask questions. On average, 311 receives over 7,000 calls per month. Over the past four months, we've answered 87% of those calls within 60 seconds, and now that we are fully staffed, that number is improving. We also have, on average, a 70% SPAC, which means that we are the single point of contact for 70% of our calls to 311, which means we just don't have to transfer them elsewhere into the city. This is a look at what the new system will look like. As you can see, on the right-hand side, there is a Google map that will help residents easily track and pinpoint requests throughout the city. There is also, you can look at the requests that come in as a list. This is just a view of that. So one of the areas that will be much easier under the new system is it'll make searching for an issue easier. Along the top, there is a new typeable search function, so if you wanted to report, say, a missed recycling or something like that, you could just type in the word recycling, and every type of request to do with recycling would come up, and you could pick. We've also strived for easy-to-identify categories, that we have a user-friendly system. And along the top there, you can also ask a general question to 311 if you don't find what you're looking for in the list of topics. We also have an improved mapping and address function. The new system uses Google Maps to pinpoint the location of a request. Currently, only our 311 app allows you to map out and see where requests are coming in now through the city, and they would have to come through the app for you to see them. Residents can also now identify the type of request by clicking on the pin, and it also relays where that request is in the process. So if it's just been submitted, if it's actually been received by staff, if the work is in progress, or if it's been completed. Finally, at the top right-hand corner, there's a search by keyword. So if you wanted to see where temporary cables in the right-of-way had been reported, you could just put in the word cables, and those would all come up around the city in those locations where they've been reported. This is an actual look at what the request page will look like. This is trash in the alley. You can note that there's a number of dropdown menus that we can get further pinpoint the specifics of each request. And signing up is very easy now. You can sign up through your Facebook account. You can have a password, email, username. One thing I would like to note is where it did not report your name in our last system, it will now associate your name or your username with your report, and it will report that to the public. So just something for our residents to be aware of. You can still report issues anonymously, and they will show on that map so that you can track them. However, if the request type is marked "private" and it's reported anonymously, it will not show on the map. And one such area where we have set the code, or set the request type to "private" is our code compliance requests. We had some concerns that were voiced related to the code compliance requests in 311, and we decided to mark those requests as "private" so that only the person reporting the request and the city staff could see the photos. The concerns focused on whether the 311 app was being used to retaliate or shame neighbors. And so obviously, we are sensitive to those concerns. And unfortunately, with the new system as it is now, there's not a way that you can just turn off the photos. You either have to mark the entire request type as "private," or it'll show the photos associated with that. So we do have a solution for that, for mapping and tracking those code requests. Code recently requested, or released this map. It's a GIS map of all of the code compliance cases that have been recently reported and recently closed throughout the city. And while it does show the type of violation and the address, it does not show any photos associated with those requests. So the, when a reporter is reporting through 311 a code violation, they are prompted to look at this webpage if they want to track that through the system, if they're doing it anonymously. If they're doing it through a username that they've already signed up, they would be able to track it. And finally, this is what the new app will look like. Residents will need to download the app anew when we launch on May 15th. So we will be really pushing that to the public. It is a free app, of course, and we've also increased the usefulness of the app. It now acts as a hub, and it provides a number of webpages for useful information throughout the city. So you can just scroll down, you can click it to call 311, you can click it to call non-emergency police, you can use it to get to our make-payments-online webpage. So over the coming weeks, we'll be engaging residents and asking them to download the new app, and we'll be advertising that May 15th launch date through press releases, social media, and other public outreach. And that's all. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Shapira.
Thank you, Mayor Elizabeth. I'm sure you're anticipating this question. So in the app, when you submit something and you go in to get an update, what kinds of updates will be available to residents? Will it just be open, working on it, closed, or will they actually get a little bit more detail?
There is a comment section where staff can comment exactly where they are in the process. I mean, they will switch, they will upgrade it to submitted, to received, to working on it, to completed, but there is also a notes section that they can communicate to the resident where they are in the process.
And Mayor, just one more question. So that note will be visible to anyone who clicks on that one on the map, or just to the person who submitted it?
I believe if it's an open, if it's a non-private request, it'll be open to anybody who clicks on it on the map.
Excellent. Thank you for your work on this.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, just a few personnel notes I wanted to bring to everyone's attention. We've had some management promotions within the Police Department that are of note. First, Commander Dave Humble has been promoted to Assistant Chief. He was here a little bit earlier. Congratulations to him. As a result of his promotion up, Lieutenant Jeff Glover has now been promoted to Commander. Congratulations to Jeff. And Dane Sorensen and Jim Swig are now lieutenants within the Police Department, and we appreciate their service and wish them well in their new roles. As well, Marilyn DeRosa, who's the Deputy Public Works Director for the Water Utilities Division, has now been named as the City Engineer. So she'll be in charge of that division as well as capital improvement project management. I also want to announce that we have hired a new internal auditor, Lori Cox, who will be coming to us on May 22nd from Pima Community College District, where she is the chief internal auditor for that school district. In addition, and just real quick, Donna Kennedy, who is our Economic Development Director, who I believe is here, recently was made aware of two prestigious awards she got from AZRE Magazine. First, she was named one of 2017's Most Influential Women in Commercial Real Estate for the Valley, and also she was named a 2017, 2018 Economic Developer to Follow and to Know. And we already knew that because we follow and know her here, but I'm glad to see that the region is recognizing her excellence. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Our next item on our agenda is our Consent Agenda. All the items listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered as a group, and will be enacted with one motion by the City Council. Unless an item is removed for separate consideration, members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk, and council members may remove any item for separate consideration. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker's card, which can be found at the back of the room, and give it to our city clerk. I will call your name when it's your turn for public comment. Miscellaneous items, 5A1 through 5A2. Awards and bids and contracts, items 5B1 through 5B10. And resolutions, items 5C1 through 5C4. Again, any agenda item marked with an asterisk is a public hearing item, and it can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed at this time on the Consent Agenda, could you please get my attention now? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Is there a motion on the Consent Agenda as read? It's been moved by Councilmember QB, seconded by Councilmember Shapira. Please vote. Councilman Navarro.
Aye.
You just scared a whole bunch of people in this room, in our chambers. All right, that motion passes 5 to 0 with Councilmember Granville absent and Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage absent. Next item is our Non-Cent Agenda. All the, yes, Non-Cent Agenda, all the items listed on Non-Cent Agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for a second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. 6A1 miscellaneous items and bids and contracts. 6A1 is approve a utilization of a six-month State of Arizona contract with Corporate Job Bank, all about people, Insight Global Incorporated, and Kelly Services for temporary staffing services utilized throughout the city. Is there, this is, is there any comments or discussion on item 6A1? Is there a motion on item 6A1? Moved by Councilmember Shapira, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion carries 5 to 0. Next item is item 6A2, is approve a one-year contract renewal with Express Scripts to provide pharmacy benefits, management services for eligible city employees and departments. Is there any comments or discussion from the council or a motion on item 6A2? Moved by Councilmember Keating. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Shapira. Please vote. That motion passes 5 to 0. The next section of the Non-Cent Agenda is ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. For second hearings and votes for these items were scheduled for May 25th, 2017. So ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing, item 6B1 is introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance, amending Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 18 of the Tempe City Code, abolishing the Tempe History Museum and Library Advisory Board and establishing a library advisory board. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for May 25th. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us on this item? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, any comments or discussion? Next item is item 6B2, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance and amending the Tempe City Code, Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 3, changing the name and mandate and makeup of all the Tempe Municipal Arts Commission. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for May 25th, 2017. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6B2? Seeing none, any comments or discussion from the council? Seeing none. Next, agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be considered now. These items were read and introduced on April 20th, 2017, and votes will be taken tonight. Item 6C is an ordinance and items for second hearing and final adoption. Item 6C1 is to hold a second hearing and a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for the reversion of the zoning map amendment prior entitlements to the Miller Curry Homes located at 1245 North Miller Road. The applicant is the City of Tempe. This is a public hearing item. I look to, is the applicant, is there anyone in the audience actually wishing to address us under item 6C1? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, I would look to my council colleagues. Any comments or discussion? And I'll hand it over to our staff.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This request tonight is the request of reversion of the zoning for Miller Curry Townhomes. The property designation on this site is currently mixed use. The reversion will revert the property to General Industrial District, GID. We understand there's a new property owner on the site, and the property owner is currently here today. This request is in support of the property owner. They plan to build at the future time a warehouse with a caretaker residence on the property.
Okay.
And that will come forward at a future time.
Okay. Any comments or discussion from the council on this? Is there a motion under item 6C1? It's been moved by Councilmember Shapira and seconded by Councilmember QB. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes 5 to 0. Next item on our agenda is item 6C2, is to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the partial abandonment of a waterline easement located at the northwest corner of Tempe Town Lake and Scottsdale Road. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6C2? Could you please get my... Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the public process. Any comments or discussion from the council or a motion under item 6C2? Moved by Councilmember Keating. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Shapiro. Please vote. That motion passes five to zero. Next item is item 6C3, is to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving the conveyance of approximately 3.14 acres of city-owned land located at southwest corner of Mill and Southern Avenue, otherwise known as Denial Plaza, and authorizing the mayor to execute a development and disposition agreement with Newtown CDC. One or more deeds and other related documents necessary to effect such conveyance and other transactions for the development of for-sale subsidized, otherwise known as affordable housing. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6C3? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Any comments or discussion or a motion on item 6C3 from my colleagues? It's moved by Councilmember QB, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. That motion passes seven to zero with Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage and Councilmember Granville absent.
Excuse me for clarification, it passed five to zero?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is item 6C4, is to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing a city manager or designated to negotiate into one or more leases and related documents for the occupancy of space within city-owned facilities that are leased as commercial spaces to the public and amended ordinance number 2011.35 to authorize such action. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6C4? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, I look to my council colleagues. Any discussion or a motion on item 6C4? It's been moved by Councilmember Keating and seconded by Councilmember QB. Please vote. That motion passes five to zero. Next item is item 6C5, is to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a planned area development overlay and approve a development plan review for a new building for vehicle sales for Carvana located at 706 North Scottsdale Road. The applicant is Gamage in Burnham. This is a public hearing item, and I just want to make one note that there is, I'm going to hand it over to, oh, here it is. I can hand this over to Ryan or to Chad, whoever, to explain some corrections in our conditions to the report that was submitted.
Mayor, yes, thank you. There are some corrections and omissions to the conditions of approval provided in the staff report for City Council. These modifications to the condition were approved by the DRC and accepted by this applicant. So I'll read those modifications into the record. Plan area development overlay condition number three shall be modified and read as follows. The planned area development overlay for Carvana, cover sheet and site plan dated February 1, 2017 shall be modified to indicate a maximum building height of 84 feet and be put in proper engineered format with appropriate signature blanks and kept on file with the city of Tempe's Community Development Department within 60 days of the date of City Council approval and prior to issuance of building permits. The use permit conditions listed in the report was also in error. Those use permit conditions are applied to the DRC decision with the use permit, so you're not acting on those use permit conditions. The development plan review conditions of approval, there was a modification to general condition number one. I'll read that into the record as follows. Except as modified by conditions, development shall be in substantial conformance with the site plan dated February 1, 2017, building elevations dated March 15, 2017, and landscape plan dated February 2, 2017. Minor modifications may be reviewed through the site plan, through, correction, through the plan check process of construction documents. Major modifications will require submittal of a development plan review. Both staff and the applicant are in agreement with these corrections.
Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to make a statement? I do have one card. Would you want the public, you want to make a statement and then we can get the public comment, or do you want the public comment and you can make a statement?
It's from Kim.
Or me?
I think our, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for your record, my name is Monjula Vaz, Law from Gamage in Burnham. What we'd like to do, it's up to you, we'd like to make a little presentation just to show the public Carvana. Just take a little couple minutes, and then be happy to answer any questions you have and hear from the public.
Okay.
For, to start, to start the presentation, Vanessa McDonald from Carvana will be making the presentation. So I'll turn it over to Vanessa for now.
Good evening, Mayor Mitchell, members of the council. My name is Vanessa McDonald, and as Monjula stated, I'm with Carvana LLC, and I also live here in the city of Tempe. I wanted to take a brief moment this evening just to introduce you to our company. I'm not sure what your base of knowledge is. We are a new company, or a relatively new company, and we're definitely new here to the city of Tempe. We recently moved our corporate headquarters over to the Liberty Center at Rio Solado. Carvana, here's our story. Carvana is an online retailer of pre-owned cars. This is a picture of our website. If you go to the website, we've been described as an Amazon or Zappos for cars. You put in all your parameters, and we will bring up the car that you're interested in purchasing, and you can preview it online, you can spin it around, open the doors, get a really good look at it. You can also finance your car online if you need to, or you can pay cash. And then the thing that really distinguishes us from our competitors is that we have a seven-day test own. You buy a car from us, and you can take seven days to decide whether or not you'd like to keep that car. When you buy a car from us, you have a few different fulfillment options. You can have it delivered directly to your home on one of our company-owned single-car haulers. In some markets, you can come and pick it up at a location. And then what we're here to talk to you about tonight is our vending machine. And this is a format that we use in various markets around the country. As I previously said, you purchase the car online, you're mailed all of your transactional paperwork, and you're also mailed one of these coins that you are directed to bring to the vending machine. We set up an appointment with you, so all of the customers who are coming to the vending machine have purchased their car in advance, and they're coming by appointment only. This is a rendering of the fulfillment center and our vending machine tower. This is as you're looking southwest from Scottsdale Road. So you can see the storage tower where the cars are being held while they're waiting for customer pickup, and then the fulfillment center, the single-story building below. Just to give you an example of how the vending machine works, this is a short video from our Nashville location, and these are customers who have pre-purchased their cars. They have appointments, and they're coming to get their car from our welcome center. As you can see, we try, we try and make it a fun and dynamic experience for, you know, what traditionally has been a process that people typically don't look forward to. It's been really successful in a short amount of time. We've developed a big revenue stream. We started in Atlanta, Georgia, and we're now the second-largest pre-owned dealer in the state of Georgia. And we currently are selling cars in 23 different markets, and we now have five vending machines that are operational as of this month. Simply put, we are applying like modern technology to a traditional industry, and we feel like we're just, our company was made to disrupt an industry similar to the way Uber has done to taxi industries. From a land planning measure and a municipal measure, by any measure that you look at up here on the screen, we have a small footprint, a small building square footage. We don't require a lot of parking, as I mentioned before. Everyone coming to the site, the customers are there coming by appointment only. There's no for-sale inventory on the site, so consequently, we're not holding big marketing events, inviting people to the site, using loudspeakers. It's a pretty low-impact use. Again, small areas of paving, and we have no fuel pumps or service bays that you normally see at a traditional car dealer. So again, this is just a visual which demonstrates, you know, the small footprint that we have versus a traditional car dealer. And if we would even try and put all of our inventory in a single location, we would have to find space for 8,000 cars, because that's how many cars we have available for sale. As I previously mentioned, we recently moved to Tempe. We're excited to be, you know, a community partner. That's a rendering of our building over at the Liberty Center. All of our employees will be there at the end of June. And as we move into a market, we're really excited to become involved in the community through volunteer work, charity work, and different activities that we like to become involved with. So that's Carvana. I think Monjula was going to address any of the land use questions that you might have. Do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing item, and I have one card. Kim Gaffney Loza, could you please come forward? Say your name and place of residence for record, even though.
Hi, I'm Kim Gaffney Loza, and thank you, Mayor and council, for letting me voice my support for this development. As you know, from many of us talking in the past, we're all concerned about the traffic in the area. And from what I've seen of this project, it looks like the traffic is going to be minimal for the amount of revenue that could be generated for the city of Tempe. I know when I bought my last vehicle, I went out of my way to buy it in Tempe, so Tempe got the sales tax money.
Thank you.
And it, and I was very concerned about that, so I looked into it to make sure that, you know, Tempe would be getting the sales tax money for this development. Monjula has been very responsive to the neighborhood as far as our concerns about the way traffic would be moved along the entrance and exit on Scottsdale Road, and we feel pretty comfortable with this development as far as the way the land is going to be used. So I'd just like to say that, oh, and Darlene Justice wanted me to make sure and tell you that she's very much in support also and couldn't be here today.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing item. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address us under item 6C5? Could you please get my attention? I will close that portion. Is there any comments or discussion from the council? If not, is there a motion on item 6C5? It's been moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Shapiro.
For clarification, the motion is to approve with the modified conditions of approval as read into the record.
Is there a motion, can we, is there a motion regarding the, can you read amend your motion, Councilor, or Keating?
Let me say that again.
Make a new motion with the amendments.
I, I will be approved. I withdraw my original motion. Now I make a motion to approve with the amendments as written.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those, please vote. That motion passes five to zero. Thank you, thank you very much, and welcome. Next item on our agenda is item 6C6, is to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment, planned area development overlay, and approve development plan review for 18 single-family detached homes from Shadow Rock located at 2722 North College Avenue. The applicant is Gamage in Burnham. This is a public hearing item. Would the applicant like to make a statement?
Good evening. I'll make a few brief remarks. I'm Susan Demmett with Gamage in Burnham, 2 North Central. So I'm here tonight, we're here tonight on behalf of Taylor Morrison with a project called Shadow Rock. As you noted, we are proposing to build 18 single-family detached homes on a 2 and 1/4 acre parcel at College and Continental. I know the city of Tempe does not see a lot of new single-family development proposals. We've been very, very excited, Taylor Morrison's very excited, to bring their products to your community. The one thing I will say, and then I'll just answer questions if you have any, is that from the outset of this process, which started last September, we took great care to work with the community. This is an infill site, and we have a tight-knit existing neighborhood that's around us. We've held a total of six neighborhood meetings over the last eight months, worked very closely with the neighborhood, maintained an open dialogue with them, and have made a number of changes to the site plan elevations and addressed various things in response to their comments and concerns. We've done the same with your staff, and so we feel we're here tonight with support of a majority of the immediately adjacent neighbors and area neighborhood leaders. Your staff is supportive of this request. The design review commission unanimously recommended approval, and we're looking forward to your approval this evening. And once we do have that, Taylor Morrison hopes to start construction in September of this year. And with that, any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Before I go there, this is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under item 6C6? Could you please get my attention now? I do not have any cards. Okay, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Councilmember QB.
First of all, thank you so much for reaching out to the public so thoroughly, so many meetings, they really, you're an exemplar of developers reaching out to the public. Thank you. So I do have a question, though. I tried to find on the APS or SRP service maps if it was, is it APS or SRP area?
SRP, SRP project.
So knowing that the SRP policies are very, just not very good for rooftop solar, are you at least preparing the homes so that they're solar-ready should that policy change, or should there be new developments in the rooftop solar technology?
You do have conduit. So the homes are pre-plumbed, I guess, is an appropriate word, so that if solar is available in the future, the residents have that option to make that connection?
It is available now, but, right, should the policies change.
Right, should the policies change.
Thanks, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion or any other discussion under item 6C6? And for the rec, I think this is great to have a single-family homes in Tempe. We're always encouraging that, so thank you for bringing this project forward. Is there a motion regarding item 6C6? It's been moved by Councilmember QB, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. That motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Next item under this section is item 6C7. This item has been continued to the May 25, 2017 regular council meeting. Item 6C8 is hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for reversion of the zoning map amendment for prior entitlements for Lemon mixed-use development located at 919, 1011, and 1019 East Lemon Street. The applicant is the city of Tempe. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under this item? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Are there any comments or discussion from council or a motion under item 6C8? It's a reversion. I mean, staff would like, staff is recommending to adopt this ordinance?
That's correct.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Shapiro. Please vote. That motion passes five to zero with Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage and Councilmember Granville absent. The next item on our agenda is our current events and council announcements and agenda items. Councilmember Shapiro. Councilmember Key.
None, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember QB.
I want to thank all the volunteers that came out on the A-Mountain Restoration Day, which took place on April 21st, the day before Earth Day, and Tempe Mission Palms, Striker Sustainability, FedEx, the ASU Outdoors Club, and School of Sustainability, and Linda Knudsen, who's a neighborhood resident, who is a community leader, who really brought this idea initially to me eight years ago. It's been a great event. We had over 80 people, no kids this year, though. No child labor was involved. But I especially want to thank Bonnie Richardson and the whole Public Works staff for helping. We removed many tons of trash, restored some trails, moved rocks, shoveled gravel, and it was a labor of love that we plan to continue now and into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple announcements. One, I want to remind everyone, the coming Monday, this coming Monday, May 8, is our community salutes. Community Salutes. It starts at 6:00 PM at the Tempe Center for the Arts, and this is a really great program honoring our future military service members that are in high school, moving on after high school and graduation to take their first step towards serving our country. And I really want to recognize the sponsors for this, to help make this event happen, our Community Salutes event happen, and that is, I'd like to recognize APS, the Association of the United States Army, we want to thank them, Gorman and Companies, they helped us develop the Valor and, and it's, and eighth, and also the Navy Federal Credit Union, as well as OPUS. We want to thank them for their sponsorships for the Community Salutes, which is this May 8. I also want to thank our staff and Councilmember QB and Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage for really coming out a week ago, or not a week ago, this last Saturday, or was it? Yeah, it was Saturday, for the planting of the trees at a scare park. And we mentioned earlier when we received the Tree City USA certificate, how important we think our shade structure and our shade canopy is for the city of Tempe. And it's really great that we, you know, we got our hands dirty, we got, you know, that ground's hard, even though we thought it was soft, but we planted close to 42 trees, and then it was a really great experience, and I can't thank our staff enough for doing that.
And all the Tempe compost that went into.
All the Tempe compost that went into is really great. And then I also want to recognize, this Sunday is the 20th anniversary for our sister city in Beaujoussumer in France, and it's something that's really, we value our sister city program, and I want to congratulate Tempe Sister Cities for that as well. With that, we will close our comments. Next item on our agenda is our public appearances. According to Arizona Open Meeting Law, the City Council may only discuss matters listed on this agenda. Matters discussed by the public during public appearances cannot be discussed by the City Council unless they are specifically listed on this agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, and speaker visual aids and recorded tapes are not allowed. Members of the public shall refrain from making any personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, and for becoming boisterous while attending the City Council meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, clapping, stomping of feet is unauthorized, and if there's demonstrations do result, they will, they do happen, they will be result in removal of the City Council chambers. Under scheduled public appearances, we do not have any. Under public, under unscheduled public appearances, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, we'll close that portion. We are adjourned.[1790.21]